For the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Et tu de repartir pour une nation sans frontières, indivisible, avec la richesse des blessures.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. Dispense with reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Controllers' Report for month ending April 30, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3B Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting, held April 19, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3C Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held April 19, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting, held April 19, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3E Minutes of the Composite Pension Board Meeting, held April 19, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3F Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting, held May 17, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
The annual Armed Forces Parade will be held this Saturday, May 20th, at 11:00 a.m. in downtown, starting at the Gino Merly Veterans Center at Vine Street and Penn Avenue. County of Lackawanna Transit System will offer free rides on all routes on Saturday in celebration of the annual parade. The 30th Annual LRC River Fest 2017 will be held this Saturday, May 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. A full day of activities, music, food, and vendors are planned for Sweeney's Beach Recreation Area, 41 Poplar Street.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton resident and taxpayer. I hope you can see my tee-shirt swinging on vine. It's one of our annual fundraisers for the Albright Memorial Library. Now, this is a week from tomorrow, Friday, May 26th. And I'm announcing it a week early to give people time to purchase tickets at any one of the libraries, Albright, or the Nancy K. Holmes Branch in Green Ridge, or the Library Express. If you purchase tickets in advance, it's $15. If you buy it at the door, it's $20. This is outside, between the library and Lackawanna College. There'll be tents, so you don't have to worry about the tornado coming through. But for $15, if you buy your ticket in advance, all the beer, wine, margaritas, food, you can eat and drink. Okay? You have to be over 21 to attend this event. If you're a downtown denizen like I am, at the end of the night, you just low crawl home. Don't have to worry about a thing. You'll be low crawling home at the end of this. It's a wonderful thing. There'll be live music, Paul DeBel and the Exact Change with vocalist Tara Michelle. So it's gonna be a wonderful night. There's so much food. There are so many desserts. We moved the desserts into the library's first floor. And it's just like chocolate from one end of the room to the other. You could eat more than $15 worth of desserts alone. So come, have a good time. It's a win-win for everybody. Okay. There are supposed to be RFP bids opened tomorrow, two of them. One for the Sewer Authority Audit at 10:00 a.m. down in the Sewer Authority's office. I guess it's across from the mayor. And the other one is supposed to be the long-anticipated "God Help Us" Third Party Administrator for the Pension Plans. Now, I missed the pension meetings on Wednesday because I was at a number of county meetings instead. But Marie went and she says, "Guess what?" And I said, "What?" She says, "As of yesterday, they had no bids for the third-party administrator." So I am anxiously awaiting what we're gonna hear when we come at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning to see, has anything come in in the last 48 hours? I mean, I hope that the mayor has a Plan B when he's promised us for over a year a nationally-recognized third-party administrator. But we shall see.
Ms. Hoda-Wanitz, I'm not sure whose information is correct. Hopefully, it's my information. When I answered your question from two weeks ago, the information I got from the HR department was that there are already three bidders in, and that was...
Marie will comment on that when she gets up, I'm sure. But like I said, you know, that was the information apparently that came out of the Pension Board. So I hope there's something. Speaking of things overdue, do we have an update at Noel's Insurance List yet? No. I wouldn't think we would. What, seven weeks? But that's okay. I was looking at the city's website before I came down, and thank God, there are now two controller reports on the website, March and April. So at least, you know, we're making progress there. On the other hand, the list of RFPs on that website, the rental registration is still a one-page document, which is the cover sheet for what they should be putting out for their proposal. And I'd dearly love to see what they're putting out on that bid for rental registration. But have we gotten any hint or info yet on the cost to repair the Naog treehouse yet? Are they working on that?
I didn't hear anything.
Summer's fast approaching. Okay. And have we gotten any look at the reassessment data from the county about, is there any use to this?
Yeah, well, I've talked to the Director of the Assessment Office. So we're, I'm gonna go over there over the next few weeks and take a look at the boxes and see what's there. I'm still hopeful there's some electronic data that they haven't been able to find yet.
Oh, before I forget, congratulations, Mr. Gahn, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Wexler, I really do think you need to be running for future offices.
Thank you.
You've got too much talent to be wasted. Okay. And one thing really bothers me, and I don't hear enough discussion about it, and that is, what's gonna be the impact on city operations and the city budget and the city's credit rating and its future if the Scranton School Board goes down the drain? I would like to start hearing some thoughts on that in the future. We're about to come out of distressed status, and we're ignoring an 800-pound gorilla in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Sorrenti?
Hi, I'm Jessica Sorrenti from Clark Summit, but I'm here on behalf of the Scranton Public Library, hopefully to encourage you after Joan just spoke about swinging on vine. But I'll tell you a few more details about it. Tara Michelle is a guest vocalist this year. She's well-known for working with Lauryn Hill and John Legend, but she is a Scranton native. So I'm very excited to welcome her back to this area and excited to see your talent come to the stage. We have some great raffles and great food coming this year, so we hope you can join us. Some of our food sponsors, we have Cooper Seafood House. Yes, we are hoping that they bring crab cakes. We keep asking. We have Mayuri Indian Cuisine. We have Rita's Ice, and we have pizza from everywhere. So it's a lot of fun, and I hope you can join us for swinging on vine. And then I have one second announcement is actually about the Friends Book Sale. The Friends of the Scranton Public Library will be holding their book sale from June 6th through June 11th at the Marketplace at Steamtown outside of Crunch Fitness. They always have a great selection of fiction, nonfiction, children's books, and this time they have a lot of audiobooks. So if you are interested, it is handicapped accessible. Well, thank you. We look forward to seeing you hopefully next Friday.
Thank you. Gerard Hetman?
Good evening, council. Gerard Hetman from Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. To begin, our annual Bike Safety Fair event, originally scheduled for last Saturday, May 13th, has been postponed due to inclement weather last weekend. The new date for the event is Saturday, June 24th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., once again at McDade Park. The event will feature bike safety lessons from the Scranton Police and the Pennsylvania State Police. And as always, all children in attendance will receive a free bike helmet courtesy of PNC Bank. And all children will be entered at the door to win a free bike to be raffled off that day, compliments of Strive. So we look forward to seeing everyone there. We thought with the bad weather forecasted last week, and as it turned out, it was pretty cold and wet on Saturday morning, we look forward to seeing everyone who would have attended later in the summer in June. Second, just a reminder, the 50th Annual Lackawanna County Job Fair comes up next Thursday, May 25th, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at PNC Field. I'm happy to announce that we have 85 employers as of today registered to attend the event. That's by far the most we've ever had. We have companies, big and small, from all sectors of private industry that you can imagine. Lots of different folks under one roof for job seekers to visit with. And as I mentioned last month, we've moved it earlier to try to accommodate student-age populations. We're looking for internships and also summer work. We've seen, we seem to see more of that in the last few years. So we're happy, anyone is welcome, of course, but we just tried to move it to accommodate what we see as a growing demographic that attends the event each year. Third, the Lackawanna County Parks and Recreation Department is seeking lifeguards for the 2017 summer season. All four county parks now feature swimming facilities that are open during the summer, so that's increased our need for lifeguards from some of our past quotas in past years. Lifeguards must be at least 16 years of age or older and must be certified and lifesaving by the American Red Cross. For more information, for anyone who's interested, please contact our Parks and Recreation Department at 570-963-6764. And also, as we enter the heart of the summer months, our camps, clinics, and leagues for our Parks and Recreation Department, many of them are open for registration at this time. That includes our youth soccer league that runs at all three county parks for boys and girls ages 5 through 14. Our youth tennis clinic, that's at 11 locations throughout the summer, boys and girls ages 8 through 16. Our adult tennis league at McDade Park for ages 21 and older. And also our gymnastics clinic, that's at United Sports Academy for boys and girls ages 4 through 16. Those are the bulk of them. We'll see a few more as we go into the fall, but most of them now are open for the summer. You can call 570-963-6764 to register for any of these programs or for more information on any of them. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Foley?
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll try not to take up all my time. A couple of issues. First, I sent a letter to Mr. Wexler. It went out via email last night. It called the attention, and I hope it was shared with all of the council members.
John, excuse me one second. What email address did you send that to? Because I did not receive a letter from him today.
I emailed it to you.
Okay.
And in the letter, it indicates that there was $468,000 worth of office equipment and vehicles purchased between August 2016 and December. One would question, why would anyone buy office equipment and vehicles knowing it was gonna be sold in December? Very simple. It also calls into question all of the capital expenditures for the nine months ended December of roughly $12 million, whether those expenditures were required. In the letter, I made a suggestion that this body recommend or enact an ordinance to dissolve the Sewer Authority. You are being stonewalled. It will continue using attorney-client privilege where you could just dissolve the authority, then all the records would revert back to you. With that, you would have Jason Schreibe report to you, or abolish the position. Your choice. It'll be interesting to see if one or more individuals that are there today on council would make a recommendation to dissolve the authority. And if you don't want to, then the taxpayers have to ask themselves, why doesn't council want the answers when the issue is very simple? Dissolve it. The Sewer Authority Audit, someone mentioned it. The last one I found was December, or March 31st, 2015. I don't know whether the March 31st, 2016 audit was issued yet. Would it? I'd love to get a copy. But if it wasn't, then I'd find that problematic because the 2015 audit, March 31st, was issued in August 2015. 16 audit is not issued yet, then you guys have a real problem. And I would suggest to whoever's ever gonna do it, if 16 wasn't done, that you have the 2016, and then you have an audit as of December 31st. Or you can do it as of March 16, 2017. Do them both together. Insist that they be released before the November election. I've taken an opportunity to look at the mayor's campaign reports for 2013, 14, 15, and 16. I have analyzed them. I've broken them down differently than other people look at them. Maybe the sky in my world is probably different than everybody else's because I'm the odd person. But in looking at the information, it has raised several questions based on the contributors, an awful lot of vendors with the city, some of which relate to other matters that I'm looking at the city. At some point, I'll find the nexus, and I will put it in writing to you folks. At some point, I'm gonna share that analysis with the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. So if you wish to see it, it'll be up on their website for everybody to have an idea where the money is coming from to fund the campaign of public officials. I did not look at any of the campaign reports for council members, nor do I have any intentions of doing it. But I would say that the council ought to take a look at that information, then you make a judgment as to where you believe the city should go. Last item. At some point, I'm probably gonna meet with the unions. I'll meet with fire and police. It's important to me that they understand what has happened to the city over the last 10 years. They need to know what the true liability of the pension plan is because it's not in your audited financial statements. And then they have to understand how much should have been deposited into the pension plan that was not put into the pension plan. You can't kick the can down the road anymore. So, gentlemen, with that, have a great evening.
Mr. Foley, I just would ask you to, would you try to send that email again and also copy Mrs. Reed on it? Because I checked my email right before I came this evening, and I have not received it yet.
What I will do, when I get back to the lake, I will send it out this evening.
Just copy Mrs. Reed on it, too, please.
I would be more than happy in the future to send it to every council member. I just don't have your email addresses. So...
And they're all, they're all on the city's website, actually.
If you get it to the city, it could take you forever. I can get it to you, give me your personal email address, because I send it to all the trade associations.
I'd not waste a paper either, so that's a...
I'll give you mine also.
The city email is slow. It is, and if there's an attachment, sometimes it doesn't accept it. Bill Jackowitz?
Good evening, Scranton City Council, Kathy Stenographer, Lori Amel. Good evening to all of you. Well, the first stage is over. We had the primary election. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Gahn for his victory, and I'd like to congratulate Pat Rogan on his victory, although Pat, it was awful close. So I hope you learned, I hope you learned something from this. You need to get back to supporting the people again. Need to get behind the people and not, not the city council president and the administration like you've been doing. Need to get behind the people and start supporting the people because the people are paying attention. They're paying attention to what's going on, what they're, what people are bloating on, and what their votes are for, and what they stand for, and everything else. So a word to the wise, Pat, if you're planning on going for a higher, higher office or remaining on city council, you need to get back into the swing of things like you were a few years back. Okay, Sewer Authority meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:00. I hope a lot of people attend the meeting.
Mr. Jackowitz, that's been postponed until the 24th.
It's been postponed? Okay, thank you for that information. I wasn't aware of that. You saved me a trip down here. I appreciate that. Okay, speaking of the Sewer Authority, Mr. Foley sure comes up with a lot of information. He's doing a lot of, putting a lot of time and a lot of research into this. You know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to dissolve the Sewer Authority if that's at all possible. You know, because authorities, authorities are no good. Authorities run amok, and no one controls the authorities, and they basically do what they want to do, when they want to do it. And so far, the authorities have gotten the taxpayers in a lot of trouble, and with the help of city council. And not only this city council, but the city councils in the past. So we need to really look at this because the taxpayers and the ratepayers can't afford much more of this. I mean, I got my water bill today, and I went into sticker shock. You know, I mean, it's, it's crazy. So, you know, we really need to do this. We need to start, we still, we got, what, six months left before the general election? A lot can be done in that six-month period of time. We can accomplish a lot of things and make it easier for the new administration coming into office in January, and for the new council members coming into office in January. We can make things a lot easier for them if you guys buckle down and do some hard work now between now and the primary election in November. And let's remember, the mayor's not always right, okay? We can't support the mayor on everything because he's not always right. There are times where you have to vote against the mayor, and, you know, when those times come about, you need to do it. You know, because that's, that's, that's life. No one is always right. No one is perfect. So we need to really take our time now and really concentrate on our votes coming up between now and November, now and January, because the city cannot afford too many more mistakes. We have too many mistakes going on right now. The Parking Authority was a mistake. The Marketplace was a mistake. The Sewer Authority was a mistake. And the taxpayers ended up paying for all of this. And guess what? As far as I know, there's not many taxpayers in Scranton who have gotten pay raises. You know, and pay raises, pay, pay is pretty stagnant in this area, and, but the bills keep coming in. They have their own bills they have to pay, and now they have to pay the city bills that really, the taxpayers are not responsible for making those bills, the elected officials are, and the appointed officials. And I still believe that an appointed official does not tell an elected official what to do. An elected official is just that. He ran for office, or she ran for office, was elected by the people to do the work of the people. Where an appointed official is just that, someone who's a friend of someone or relative to someone, and they're appointed to the job. So I really expect my elected officials to stand up for the citizens and taxpayers of this city and to do the best job that they're capable of doing, and don't just cave into the mayor because the mayor, mayor wants this and the mayor wants that. Mayors have been wrong in the past, and that's why we, we're coming up on 9,000 days of being distressed, because the mayors have been wrong in the past. As a matter of fact, the mayor, not this mayor, but the past mayor, was the one who got us into all this mess, basically, and the mayor before him. And if, if, if council would have listened to the people in the past, people have come up here with a lot of good ideas and a lot of good ways of solving things, but we've always been ignored for the most part. Occasionally, somebody takes one of our suggestions and runs with it, and it usually works out for the good, but for the most part, we've been ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes and fees paid. First, I'd like to offer condolences and congratulations. And I have a little addition to that. Once again, we held an election, a primary, and we had extremely poor participation. If you didn't show up last Tuesday, for shame. And please feel free to show up informed. Last week, we had an issue on rehab down at the old Penswood Manor. And it's been contentious with the neighbors for several years, and they tried to sneak it in there without, without zoning board approval and so forth. But what I would like to say on rehabs is, we need a lot more of them, and some type of study should be done to keep a rehab here because we have quite a few problems with the opioid epidemic and other things, and alcohol and so forth. So it's really important that these people be given a chance outside of the criminal system to rehab themselves. Basically, the criminal system does nothing but to punish people and offers them no answers other than more joblessness, and maybe even worse yet, a job at dealing drugs once you get out because it put a roof over your head. Last week, I made a mention of Channel 16, and I may have been mistaken on it, but there was a letter which I unfortunately lost in the letters to the editor that had several statements that were of concern. And furthermore, we have shell companies of shell companies of shell companies buying and selling everything imaginable. And the result is that you never really know who's buying it and who owns it. For instance, back around 2009, 2008, Fox News took a, took their own reporters to court over bovine growth hormone in dairy products. And many, many experts testified that this is no good to have in dairy products. But Fox won in the Supreme Court, and the decision was that the news doesn't necessarily have to be true. So take it from there. The news doesn't have to be the truth. Oh, well, Big Brother is watching. The Sewer, once again, Sewer Authority, I hope that we limited the comp to salary for the legal representatives of that authority. I think a six-figure salary is plenty enough, and if it's not, we don't need to get billed an hour work to find a paperclip. Excuse me. Today, I think it was in the paper, once again, the county has their aim on a building up on Wyoming Avenue. And my only question is, how many tax exempts do we have to have before the city of Scranton winds up, wises up, and goes to federal court that we should not have 35% tax-exempt buildings? We cannot any longer afford it. We're putting Grandma out of her house and subsidizing, subsidizing one government building and one politically-oriented religious institution, and one more college or whatever out, and, and poor Grandma's out in the snow. So we really need to wise up because this... So, we really need to wise up because this is getting down to the wire. I'm tired of paying $650 for an undeveloped lot, and then I see we have a land bank where they're selling the lot to people for nothing. That lot was taxed delinquent for 40 years. So, it's time. We really have to do something on this property tax. If they want to compensate us, fine, buy whatever you want. Buy the whole town, but please compensate us, or buy 80% and pay 80% of the property taxes replaced the way. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher. Last week, you had a rather lengthy discussion on Penswood Manor, even after Tom Welby said that the building had been sold or picked up at one of the sales and would soon have a new owner, and who stated that he was not interested in the current tenant. So, I would certainly think he would have them evicted, and that would be the end of it. However, and I was going to wait until the minutes came out on the meeting, but it bothered me so much all week that I want to share, because I hope I never hear what I heard last week again, because at the end, a councilman stated that, you know, if this doesn't work and they don't get out by the date, we should send the, go after them on quality of life. To me, that's targeting. I think that should be verboten, but then, again, we've gone after one B&amp;B operator and no other, despite the fact that there are many. And I haven't heard any data on when Sapa, if at all, is going to help and come up with new suggestions and to modernize. But, okay, enough on that, but that really bothers me. The 2015 audit has been out for quite some time, and I've been following up with the controller to get the financial report, because there's lots and lots of information in the financial report that is not available any other place. And it keeps not ready, not ready. And the reason is because there is a discrepancy between the business administration, business administrator's office and the controller's office. Now, this has been going on for months. This is crazy. We're going to get both the 20, if the 2016 audit comes in on time, they'll be, may be issuing both of them at the same time. And that's crazy. That has got to be resolved, or you need to ask Mrs. Novembreno to just issue it the way it is and let the chips fall where they may, and just state that there's a discrepancy and identify what it is. Because inquiring minds want to know for some comparative reasons. Next, the city, I think, I guess this would be yours, Mr. Perry, the new contract with the police. It had a clause in that I wrote down that said, "The city will offer incentives for retirement aimed at six long-timed employees." Have those six employees left?
I'm not aware if they took up on the offer, but I'll definitely find out.
And was it specific? Were there names in that, or does it apply to everybody?
I don't know. If what you're reading is correct, it said it was towards six officers. Now, I don't know if, that probably means, and again, I don't want to put words into it, is that they had certain stipulations, and it just so happened that based on those stipulations, six officers fell in that category. But again, I'll find out the exact answer for you.
Okay. I would appreciate knowing that, because that has a tremendous impact on the pensions, as was brought up yesterday at the composite board. The representative from the office that develops the MOUs was there, and he used the word ridiculous a whole bunch of times before I had to leave. So, we need more information. I hope, oh, and the third-party administrator, there's lots and lots of questions were raised in that regard also, and it was asked of the controller, to whom I believe the bids are supposed to go, stated there were no responses. So, I don't know, unless they went to HR, but I don't know why the HR person, of course, wasn't here. On another issue, the Scranton Parking Authority lease agreement, how much were we supposed to give to Steamtown 300? Was there anything other than the, I know there was a $285, or $2,850,000, we were going to share the cost of the renovation of the Electric City Garage, which we gave them for a dollar. Was there anything else that we were?
Well, there was a lease agreement between Steamtown and NDC for so many parking spots in the Steamtown.
But NDC pays that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, there have been some things floating around stating that we have paid, not Steamtown 300, but Mr. Vasaliga, $4.2 million. I would like to know if that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wechler. I have a couple small things to cover. The first thing is, I received a couple complaints on 1120 Columbia Street. There's a condemned house there. DPW was there recently, and they did take the grass back. But there's a bigger issue of some lattice work that has broken, and it's being used as homes for feral cats and skunks and raccoons and things of that. The questions that the neighborhood had was, has the owner of that house been contacted to do some repairs on that to prevent that? Now, and, you know, anybody who has a condemned house in the neighborhood, it is very frustrating, as I know. The condemnation process is long and lengthy, and sometimes it's too long. But there is a process and a guideline that the city has to follow before they can go and actually seize the property and do things on their own. So, with that being said, I just want to make sure that there's been every attempt made to get a hold of the owner, to do just some minor repairs onto that home, just to prevent the animals from collecting there and living there. You know, the situation, as we know on a condemned house, it never gets better, it just gets worse. So, I just want to try to cut this off before it does get worse. I had some information on the dumpster that DPW was going to put out for, to collect electronics. I know this discussion came out. Gerard is here today, and as he can probably put some input to as well. The county also was looking to do something very similar, as Mr. Welby said last week. And so, right now, the city and the county and all really local municipalities in Lock Wana County are going to start to work in concert to get this taken care of. The particulars and dates aren't set yet, but there are going to be collection dumpsters, and there is going to be a time and a place that we can get rid of our electronics that we've been storing up, that break that, you know, the garbage man won't take, but, you know, there's nothing you really can do with. I have one in my garage. I'm sure a lot of you guys have computers and things that you can't get rid of. So, there is going to be an avenue for us to get rid of, and we're going to be working with Lock Wana County to get that done. On the agenda tonight is 5F. 5F is a gift that was given to us by Amos Towers annually. They do write us a check to the fire department, and, you know, I'm very grateful for that. And I don't want to see, you know, money is hard to come by nowadays, so I made a phone call to Amos Towers. I called and I talked to Louis Danzico, who is the head of the Towers, and, you know, he was just very happy with the service that the fire department gives them, high rise of older people, you know, with a lot of needs, and, you know, the fire department never lets them down with responding and taking care of all the issues. So, this is just their way of giving back to the city in just letting us get something that we might have a need on the table. So, after that conversation, I wondered what our need on the table was. So, I gave our fire department a call. I called Chief DeSando. He wasn't able to give me a call back, but one of his underlings, I guess you could say, Al, gave me a call back, and he explained to me that they wanted to get a piece of equipment for one of their older engines that's, it's kind of like a water cannon, I guess is the best way to put it. It mounts on the ground right to the pumper truck, and it will shoot water, I think, at a rate of about 150 gallons every 10 seconds. And that's going to be used, you know, to get at places where maybe it's unsafe for firemen to get at. They can just reach it right from the ground. That piece of equipment was about $28, $2900. The rest of the grant, or the rest of the grant, the rest of the donation is going to be used just for extra hose for the department. The other two new engines that we have came already fitted with that type of cannon. Now, the older model that we have also is kind of up to spec with the rest of the engines that we have. And I believe that's it. One final piece, Mrs. Raider was here last week about an issue with some storm drains being clogged, and we got a response back from DPW that those drains have been cleared out and cleaned, and actually, that part of North Washington, we believe, is going to be getting paved this summer, and that should also further help clear up that issue of just the sediment and the leaves and everything else collecting there, along with a better leaf picking up system, I may add, that needs to happen coming up this fall. That's all I have today. Mr. Wechler.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, just a couple of brief comments. I know the Armed Forces Parade was mentioned today. I hope to see everyone downtown this weekend. It's one of my favorite days of the year. Unfortunately, the attendance isn't what it should be many years for that parade, but it has been picking up over the last few years, and hopefully, that will continue. I am looking forward to the parade. Penswood Manor was brought up again tonight, and there was a number of correspondence that was sent out regarding that property. And I did speak with Chris Kays, the president of the Southside Neighborhood Watch, the Neighborhood Association, following the meeting, and we're very hopeful that this long and drawn-out process regarding this rehab that's been causing a lot of problems in Southside will finally come to an end. So, we're very hopeful that that will very quickly come to an end. I did get a, did speak to residents in the same neighborhood that Mr. Perry did, over in Greenridge, so I won't belabor that point. And it's been a long week, so be very brief. And finally, I would just like to thank the residents of Scranton for their support in the election on Tuesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. As you know, I requested a review by license and inspections of the 17 permit fees that collect a total of approximately $71,000, and of course, a review of any other fees and permits that may no longer be necessary. I also discussed the possibility with BA Bozoni of creating an RFP to bring a third-party to review all of the fees the city is currently charging. This review would give a neutral, comprehensive, and long overdue view of all of the city's ordinances and their fees. However, I received a response today from the BA that he met with Mr. Hinton from Lips, and his department has completed a partial review of the ordinances and associated fees. So, at this point, since the process has started, we'll wait and see what that review brings when completed to determine if we should look for a detailed evaluation by a third-party, and if it would be warranted. I think it probably will be. But make no mistake about it, I am now looking for modest change here and there. We are trying to move the needle to a more user and business-friendly city, and that cannot be done without real change in how we do our business. One more brief comment on this. For those that might have concerns, this initiative in any way is not an attempt to reduce the workforce within the License and Inspection Department. So, I'm sorry, it's not about you. It's about retaining small businesses, it's about growing small businesses, and it's about every taxpayer and every business owner through a broader tax base sharing, finally, in that growth by paying less in fees and taxes. We need to create a mindset within City Hall that finally understands that this is about the citizens, the taxpayers, and the business owners of Scranton, who are asked to pay ridiculous fees and high taxes. They are our customers, and without them, we're simply out of business. So, I'm not sitting here trying to maintain a broken status quo. This type of initiative, in my mind, must continue beyond permits, beyond fees, beyond taxes, to every single facet of city government. So, I hope that's where we go over the next months and years, and try to find a way out of this abyss of high taxes, high fees, unnecessary fees, unnecessary permits, that is driving out small businesses and not allowing businesses to come into this town. So, I'm sorry, but that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. Couple citizens' requests that I received this past week. There are large potholes on Crisp Avenue and Jackson Street, and Crisp Avenue and Frink Street, so we'll again send that to the DPW. Rachel Place in West Scranton between South Hyde Park and South Sumner Avenue is in really rough condition. That needs to be patched, and hopefully, we can request to put it on the paving list. The closure of the treehouse, I've asked several questions about that. What maintenance has been done on the treehouse since January 1st, 2014? And when it was annually checked during the winter, what was the report from 2014, 15, and 16 on the treehouse? The corner of 201 Seymour Avenue and Ariel Street is also in very rough condition. Neighbors in that area would like that patched and also put on the paving list. 2900 Block of Penman Avenue also needs to be patched and put on the paving list. There's also a lack of storm drains in that part of Manuka that is causing flooding in people's yards and eroding their sidewalks, so we'll send something to the DPW about that. Mrs. Schumacher brought up about the retirement incentives from the police contract, I believe. I'd like to again send this question to the administration. I have now asked four times for this, going back almost two years. Was an actuarial study ever completed to determine the impact of the retirement incentives included in the police and fire contract, and what impact it would have on the pension funds? Again, I've asked for this now four or five times, and I still have not received an answer to that question. The Scranton Sewer Authority meeting that was supposed to be held this Friday was canceled and rescheduled for next Wednesday, May 24th, at 4:00 PM in the Governor's Room, which is next to council chambers. It's my belief that it should be held at a more reasonable time in council chambers, and it should be televised. It's my belief that 4:00 PM, people are still trying to get out of work, it's very difficult for people to get here, and these sewer authority meetings are very, very important. Also, there was no reason given for why the meeting was canceled and rescheduled. Bottom line here is, the name of the game here is Stonewall. Where are the invoices? Where are the answers? Where is the accountability? I think, and it seems to me, over the past few months, that the Scranton Sewer Authority is hoping to delay, provide a delay tactic, and delay the meetings so that people will forget about it and not show up. I would again urge everyone in the city of Scranton, every ratepayer, every taxpayer, to attend this meeting and demand that the Scranton Sewer Authority Board invite the Auditor General in to audit the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. Last week, I asked Mayor Courtright to join this council in calling on the Scranton Sewer Authority to again invite the Auditor General in to audit this transaction. I wanted to know what his stance was on this issue. He appointed the board members of the authority, the executive director is his former city solicitor. And, not surprising, the mayor has not responded. His silence on this matter is absolutely deafening. If we start to connect the dots here, it becomes very clear that the mayor will not take a stand on any important issue that faces this city, whether it be the expansion of the landfill, leachate, and now, the audit of the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. And I have to ask myself, why? Why is he silent? Could it be because some of the individuals who have made and donated, or who have made money on the transaction have given handsomely to his campaign coffers? Where is he hiding on this issue? The people of this city have spoken loudly and clearly, they want answers. It's time for the mayor to join this council and the rest of the city of Scranton in demanding that the Scranton Sewer Authority invite the Auditor General in to do a full review of this transaction. It remains unclear to me whose interests this deal served. Was it the ratepayers, or was it certain individuals? Still very unclear. Also tonight, it's come to my attention, according to some media reports, that city officials appear to have ignored their own rules to give a cleaning contract to the family of two Scranton police officers. An attorney in the media report said, and I quote, "It appears that the bidding procedures are now being used in a manipulative way to make sure that a certain contract ends up being awarded to a preferred vendor." When the city should have secured, three quotes, they only secured... When the city should have secured three quotes, they only secured one quote, and it happened to be for the family of two Scranton police officers. The city solicitor in this media report said that the contract now for cleaning police headquarters will now have to go out to bid in June or July, I believe. So I have several questions here. Number one, I would like, and I've asked earlier this afternoon for a copy of the quotes, or quote, I'd like to know if this was negotiated with the clerical union? Is, was this a violation of the clerical contract? Because from what I understand, the city always had a maintenance worker clean the Scranton Police Department headquarters. So my other question is, where did this maintenance person go? And what is this maintenance person doing now? And I don't have all the details from this, but just on its face, it seems like if you work for a department in the city, if you work for the police department, the mayor's going to make sure you either get a contract or you get a loan from the city. And it reminds me of the $250,000 loan to the business of a, another business of a Scranton police officer, roll call, $250,000. So, when you have people in this city who are struggling to make ends meet, when you have this city which is distressed and would, it's financially in pretty bad shape, and we keep doing things like this, it makes absolutely no sense. And if the city of Scranton is doing these kind of things, only obtaining one quote, giving contracts to family of city workers, what else is going on in this building that we don't know about? So again, this leads me to believe that there are more questions that need to be asked and need to be answered from the mayor and this administration. And if we continue to get stonewalled, we need to have more people at this meeting so that we can get answers and hold this administration's feet to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. Following up on Mr. Gahan's comments about the sewer authority, I was encouraged that one of the board members from Dunware, Attorney Michael Dempsey, has requested that the records be issued unredacted and also supporting the, the motion to bring the auditor general. So I do, I do thank him for his, his intention, and hopefully he can sway the board to follow, follow that, that idea. I did speak to Larry West this week concerning the progress that's happening with Mr. Young's problem, and also with the general progress being made of bringing that project out on Meadowbrook back to the, back to the front burner, and hopefully we'll get something moving on that later on this summer. I would like to congratulate Councilman Rogan, Councilman Gahan, and also Mr. Dunleavy on their victories in the primary on Tuesday. As we could see, the, except for Mr. Gahan, who did a wonderful job, the, the amount of the spread between second to fifth, where I was, was very close. I thank everyone who came out and supported me all the year. I actually had a conversation with Mr. Dunleavy about three years ago, and I talked to him and I, and I said to him, "Kyle, if I do the things that I'm supposed to do on city council, I might not win again." And that came, that came to fruition. I, I look at what we've accomplished as a council in getting the city to the brink of being out of distress status. We did have to make tough decisions on the contracts, on the arbitration award, on the parking authority, and also on the sale of the sewer authority. Looking back on what happened, council had to do a lot of heavy lifting on all those projects. We would have liked some more input from the administration, especially on the sewer authority deal. I was forced to have a meeting that brought out a lot of the results that we're working on today, and I still stick to the fact that the information that's available on the sewer authority right now came as a result of the meeting that I scheduled. But, like I said, I did, I did make decisions that probably cost me my future return to council. I could have stayed on the sidelines and not been the council president, but I determined that that was something that I had to do to get us through these last two years of my term. I thank the opportunity for serving the public. I do thank everyone who supported me, and we will continue for the next few months to try to make the best of, of my remaining time here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Excuse me. 5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right of way necessary for the West La Juana Avenue Bridge. Document number is noted as part of the city of Scranton owned bridge project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right of way necessary for the Elm Street Bridge. Document number is noted as part of, of the city of Scranton owned bridge project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right of way necessary for the North Main Avenue Bridge. Document number is noted as part of the city of Scranton owned bridge project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution ratifying and approving the submission of a Pennsylvania recycling technical assistance application submitted by the Department of Business Administration to the Department of Environmental Protection for a technical assistance grant to conduct a recycling refuse program evaluation and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant funds in the amount of $7,500 for the environmental consulting company, SCS Engineers selected by DEP, to provide technical assistance to municipalities for the Pay As You Throw collection program.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction and resolution exception, accepting a donation of $3,799 from Amos Towers Management Enterprises Incorporated, presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department for the purchase of much needed equipment for the fire department.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 150, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into Phase Two Memorandum of Understanding between the city of Scranton and the National Resource Network to provide support for the creation and organization of a task force to assist Scranton tomorrow and provide additional assistance.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.